Our story began in 1991. Over time, the mortgage industry has experienced many changes, but our core values here at CIS have always remained the same: Character, integrity, and service. You don't need to be a mortgage expert to get a great financial plan. You just need to work with one. Our focus and dedication have allowed us to help thousands of families reach their dream of homeownership. Whether it be refinancing your current home, buying a manufactured home, or purchasing investment property, we have a product for you. We invite you to find out more by visiting our website at CISHomeLoans.com or like us on Facebook. CIS Home Loans: Mortgage loans made simple. Equal housing lender.
...and appreciate each one that's come tonight. The past week's been quite a week. We're trying to dig out from under problems the city's been having this past week. We'll talk a little more about that in detail in a few minutes. But before we start a meeting tonight, I'd like to stand together and have a word of prayer and then our pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for this beautiful day. Lord, we thank you, Lord, that you can just look on this community with good favor. Give us blessings, Lord, even when we're not deserving. Father, we ask that we continue in your will and that your will would be done in this meeting tonight. We'd conduct business that would be in keeping with good order and would be pleasing in your sight. Bless our nation. Help us to recover from this awful disease that's been plaguing us. Half a million people, Lord, are deceased from it, but we have courage to go on. We know that healing is coming. Help us as we go forward from here. Christ's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may it see you. I'd like to pause for just a second and give a hearty congratulations to our varsity boys and girls basketball teams. I understand they didn't have a good outcome today, but their season overall has been just great. And I congratulate along with the council, all of our coaches that have worked so hard this year and the teams that have played the games. They've just been spectacular this year, and I'm real thrilled to congratulate each of those young people along with their coaches. And I know the council says amen to that. If you didn't get your garbage picked up this past week, we're on make-up week. The weather was such that we couldn't really take care of you last week, but we certainly are trying to get back on track. We're gonna get Mike Johnson, the head of our sanitation, to give us a few words here of what they're doing this week to get back in the groove.
Basically, we're just trying to catch up. We're running extra trucks and asking everyone to work with us as far as putting out all their garbage. If you've got... On a normal day, we actually not put out any more than two cans, but since we were down last week, we're saying, "Put out what you got, and we'll pick it up." Try to get as much in the cans as you can. If you can't get it in there, put it on the ground beside the cans, and we'll be sure and get that too.
Around 18 to 20 tons today is what we got today. And we got lots of limbs to pick up, I understand, if I'm correct.
We sure do. The street department has cut some limbs down. They were hanging on power lines and hanging over the roads or whatever. And then we've got some people that have called in that maybe had some brush down in their yards and stuff and pulled it to the side of the road. So we'll make a good effort to get as much of that picked up as we can. Priority is garbage at the moment, but we'll, in the afternoons or whenever we have extra time, we'll pick up more brush and stuff too. So just be patient. We will get you caught up, and maybe next week we'll be back on regular garbage cycle then.
Today went pretty good?
Today went good, yeah. We... I didn't have any calls about garbage whatsoever today, so I'm assuming everything went well, so...
And we're not only picking up what's in the cans. If there's an extra bag, they're manually picking us up.
What's out at the road.
What's out, what we're getting.
What time they start this morning? They came by my house at like, it's about six o'clock.
Well, yeah, we start somewhere between six o'clock at the latest. Sometimes we leave a little bit earlier if everybody's there and want to go ahead and get started. But we start at six o'clock for sure. I would like to ask people, if you've got a can that the lid's been off of it or something, maybe tip it over a little bit and let the water run out. You may not realize it, but water's eight pounds a gallon, and you probably catch four or five gallons in a can. And that plus your garbage, it adds up, and it gets pretty heavy. So if you work with us on that, but we will get whatever you've got out there this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. At this time, we're gonna talk about our water situation we've had for the last week or so. We've been having some issues with low water pressure, tanks being low, especially on the west side of town. And I'm gonna let Rodney come and talk to us about, I guess, the perfect storm that set up on us and it kind of took us down. He's gonna talk to us about the whole matter and explain it as best he can to us and the public. If you will, Rodney, turn that PDA on right there. Talk into that mic. Thank you. Just latch the button down.
Okay. I may be a little scattered when I get started because I haven't been thinking too straight the last four days. Of course, y'all know the storm hit us and we lost water. Every leak we have fixed has been in cast iron pipe. Cast iron does not do well with a couple of them. And when the ground shifts, that cast iron breaks. And when it breaks, it's like cut me with a saw. I mean, it just breaks completely in two. But I can't... I was trying to think of a number of how many leaks we fixed this since Wednesday, but I kind of lost count. We found a leak today that we, I think, we've been looking for long before the storm hit us. That's been affecting our western tank and our baguette tank. And we're in the process of fixing it right now. It should about have it fixed. We'll turn the water back on. As of tonight, I think all of our customers will have water. And I think we're gonna start pumping out to the baguette tank tonight so the county can start providing water for their people. They'll have... We'll have to wait till the county can turn their pumps on. Have to wait for a while for the tank to get water added out of the baguette tank, out of the motor garden, on 25.
The baguette tank runs to the county?
Yes.
The county pulls out? Does it have to be full before you start setting it?
It don't have to be full, but it'll have to have some water in it before they can start pumping, or you'll just pump it dry.
Hey Rodney, what level is the western tank at right now?
It's probably about 40% by now.
What's it normally at?
Well, it's been staying for the last few months between half and three-quarters full. There were times that it would get down to half a tank, but we never quit pumping. I think we were always pumping to the county. But I think this leak we found today will remedy that problem, I'm hoping.
What size line was it?
Six-inch cast iron line. Give you a little heads up where it is. Before you get to the crack in the restaurant, it doesn't go before the state put all that riprap in. So we had to dig all that riprap out to get down to the pipe.
As well as some concrete, is that right?
There's a cover down there in the bottom of the ditch. And they had poured concrete kickers for that cover on top of our pipe. And we had to jackhammer the concrete all before we could fix the pipe.
How'd you find... I mean, how'd you find the leak? I mean, I can see how you missed, you could miss that.
We missed that one. I walked myself several times down to the... I would pull in there and look down off in there. You couldn't see anything.
It's all the riprap and the cover.
The riprap and the cover, all that. And the only... The way we found it is we literally walked all the way down in there and saw it coming out of the bottom of some of the riprap.
I want to go back to a point you made. You know, you've lost count. Do you have a... Or does your department have a log to where you say if a call comes in, there's a leak or supposed leak at 12, and you send your guys up? Do y'all have a log? Either you keep it over there, your guys down at the shop? Do they log their work and where these lines break? Do you think, and maybe these guys might be in agreement, that you could start doing that on any break, anywhere you know that? And it's not that I'm trying to say that y'all did, or I know y'all did. I would just love to know. And I think we would love to know, you know, where you've been and how long you were out there, and things like that.
I know, can't remember if it's Wednesday or Thursday, Wednesday when we started working. I know we fixed six leaks Wednesday. Then actually Wade told me about one down by his mother-in-law.
Y'all fixed that down?
We did, but we went back and checked it again, and it blew out further, so we went ahead and fixed it down there.
And that wasn't six inches, huh?
No, it was two, yeah.
About... What would you say? Pretty much all of our lines are all still the old cast iron?
No, no.
I knew that we had fixed, replaced some of them. What would you say the percentage of them old versus new?
Well, I mean, we've got cast line, cast iron pipe. We've got some ducted pipe and PVC pipe. We don't have a lot of cast iron left in the ground. We did have a lot around the downtown area, but we did that downtown revitalization. All that was done away with. I remember back a few years ago, when we had a cold spell like this, we fixed it. And we kept counting, and we fixed 22 leaks that week.
Yeah.
From the cover.
Rodney, I know we talked yesterday a little bit, but tell everybody about the generator, you know, the problems we've had.
We had a problem. We knew we had a problem with our generator, at the water treatment plant. The people from Taylor Power, they're the ones that maintained the generator. They came up and checked it out. One day, told me that something happened internally in the diesel engine on it. It wouldn't run at all. So at that point, they told me they had rental generators that they break me in. So at that point, I had a rental generator probably in the water plant. Because I knew, I knew what they were predicting, bad weather. And I had the generator in place when the storm hit. We did have an issue getting it cranked the first time. They had to bring a service man up to get it cranked because it wouldn't... The heater block wouldn't heat the block up enough to get it cranked. I'm gonna want the diesel engine to talk with it. But they got up here and got it cranked, and we went and pumped the water. But I have... They have gave me a quote on a new generator. I'm exploring options right now of going back to the diesel engine or possibly natural gas. I've got a couple of people supposed to be getting me a price on a natural gas unit.
They're a natural gas at the plant?
They're currently... Currently, it knocked them all the way out to the plant, but it can. We can get it. I don't talk to heat, leak, or gas company. We can get it out.
How is the generator, Rodney, at the point of emergency? Just follow me over.
Generator was an old as a plant. It is 92.
What size gen... Is it like, sort of like the size of the one at the fire station? It's a lot bigger?
It's a 350 KW is what we have.
I got one more question. I'm... What would... What do you need? I guess, what would it cost to get the water, I guess, the water system working like it should be? I mean, I know you said we got PVC in some areas, and we got...
That's a hard question.
Well, I mean, oh, hard.
Well, one thing I want to look at when we're all done and said, "Done with this," we're gonna have to look at revamping our Mitchell Hill Booster Pump Station. That booster pump station was put in in 1964.
I knew it was over.
And the problem, one of the problems we have pumping water out to the county, the county keeps expanding water lines. And when they do, they're putting in six and eight inch water lines. Our pump station at Mitchell Hill has got two pumps. And they're... They're pumping water, but they're pumping water through a four-inch line. And we're feeding six and eight inch water lines that keep extending with a four-inch, four-inch pump. And that's one reason we keep... We're not gonna be able to keep up with it.
Well, I guess the why I'm asking is I don't... I want to look at all this I know. We discussed about trying to maybe get some grant money to try to, you know, get the water system where it needs to be. And that's why I asked that question.
We've got one source of water. It's a good source. But basically, we have a little pipeline that comes out of here, and we could reverse the flow and blow a little water into him. We haven't been out of pure water. We've been unable to get it into our tanks where we can flow it on like the customers. We've got water, an abundance of it, up there out of the river. The river's at a high flow right now, so we haven't been out of water. We can purify it. We just can't get it to the customers. And we've had these breaks. And most of the breaks they've found have been on lines four inches to six inches. They're not small lines. Two-inch lines broke. It's big lines. So we're fighting that battle. And some of our stuff's old, like that diesel engine was over 30 years old. And those four-inch lines up there on Mitchell Hill need to be much bigger to get capacity to move that water freer and quicker. And we just got to redo that plant. It's a must. We're gonna fall behind if we don't soon do something with our system.
We have outgrown our pump station, really, in that area because county pulls a lot of water from south of there.
Do we sell them, Rodney? Water? Is it a million gallons a month or more?
No, it's... Well, Casey told me that he's pulling 45,000 gallons a day out of that baguette tank.
Are all the pumps running at 100% that we own?
Oh, yeah. I hadn't... The pumps at Mitchell Hill looked at... Actually ordered some new impellers to go in the pump. And the pump people that came in told me, said, "We think the impellers are worn out." When we took that first pump down and took the impeller out, they were shocked at how good that impeller was because they figured it'd fall all to pieces when they took it out, but it didn't. It had some wear on it, but being that old, it was in good shape.
I got a couple of things. The bowl notice that runner, how much longer do you think that'll stay in effect?
I think once we get the pressure up in our whole system... I'm gonna speak with ABM in the morning. I think we'll probably do some back tea samples, some bacteriological samples before we lift the bowl water notice. But I think that's their requirement to do.
Were your guys able, I guess, at the plant's day or catch a lot of this, you know, as soon as it happened, I guess, a lot of the breaks and things like that? Or was it, you know, was it a pretty hard job, you know, getting everything?
No, we have all of our tanks at the water plant on telemetry. And we can sit there and watch those tanks and see what's in them. And you can tell when the tanks are shotting, it's gonna be a problem.
And you have somebody watch it? Is that a 24-hour point up there? So you have somebody up there on the...
Rodney, I hope I got one thing. I just want to tell you guys, thank you for all they did working in this harsh weather that we had. And I know this was a... Been 35 years since we'd had an ice storm like this. And I hope we... Maybe we can learn some stuff, maybe do some stuff different if this ever comes back up again. But not only that, I want to say thanks to all the departments and the job that they have done. And just want to say thanks to them.
Yeah. One last thing. As far as like restaurants, have...
I've had some calls about restaurants. And I refer them to the health department because we don't regulate anything.
Yeah. I just didn't know if there was something that we need to put out, a statement to the... You know, or... I don't know. I guess Scott, that's more in your area. But I mean, you know, we don't do restaurants serving tap water. But right now, we're trying to, you know, we're telling residents to boil water.
Rodney, can you just get us a priority list? And even if it's real long, Mayor, we can just start doing two, three years. We don't get them all now, it's for birth to town. Just you tell us what we need to do, and we'll support you. We need, you know, we got your back. We want you to know that.
Rodney's a stickler about fixing it right.
We gotta know what's wrong. If we don't know what's wrong, you know, we can't help you.
We've done some major work in this last four years. We overhauled our wastewater treatment plant. It broke down on us, so we went in there, literally, in boats, got in that vat, and got down there and re-overhauled all that. Fixed our drying beds for our waste, solid waste. We put a new vacuum system to clean the big bats up there in the treatment, water treatment, where they were having to take them all the way down and scoop that stuff, that sediment out. Now we've got vacuums in there, high-dollar vacuums that are operating efficiently, I understand. So we've been doing upgrades, but this is our whole system. And it's taken some time.
We try every year to do some maintenance and repairs on...
Till we got some money coming in from our water, sale of water, we didn't have enough money to maintain our system. We were so... In the hole, we was pumping 600 and something thousand dollars into the bond payment, about another 400,000 under Rodney for operating it. A million near... A million dollars was going out of our treasury every year to pay the bond on the plant and the shortfall he had on operating money. But now we're at a break-even point to where we can start looking at improving our system and not draining the treasury so much. So it's much better. Rodney, we appreciate the work y'all have done. And I know it really mounted up on you there in a hurry when this cold temperature came and broke your lines and got us in trouble. But we're working out of the trouble. I had a lady call me today, and she said, "Don't have to report y'all to six on your side." She said, "I hadn't had a bath in a week." So she was not joking. I'm sure she called in. But anyway, folks are getting impatient out in the country, so we gotta get them some water back out there. We have a contract with the rural water folks, and we don't mean to breach our contract in any way, but we just want to provide good service and get it out there with the people. They deserve it, and we're gonna do it. Rodney's been looking for this last leak for months. We've talked about it how many times, Rodney, numerous times. Rodney said, "There's something wrong. I just can't figure it out." He's had a leak expert locator here twice in recent days, and he couldn't find the leak, but they discovered it today. Some of Rodney's retirees and former employees came out and helped us some, and we finally got to the bottom of the problem, we think, today.
We got those guys too.
Yeah. I appreciate them very much. I had part of my whole crew out there with me today. We found it.
Is that... I know y'all fixed that leak on Fifth Avenue where I live. Is that still some of the old cast iron, or is that...
That was cast, I think, yeah.
I just, I didn't know what... Like I said, that, you know, water.
Lee and Rodney have been talking for four weeks about a leak up here on 43 that he's gonna tackle. He's gonna have a standby crew. His crew and the gas company out there are all working hand in hand. We got an 18-inch line that's got two ruptures in it, close together. And if that 18 ruptures when we open it up, the whole city's gonna be out of water. So when they...
What's happening with the water?
When they go into it, they're gonna have to... They're gonna have to stay with it till it's fixed. The best thing we could hope for is it'll hold together, and they can put a band around it, clamp the leak. The worst thing that could happen is it blows completely out, and then we've got no choice but to put that 18-inch pipe back in new. And that's a major undertaking. And it will cause the entire city to be out of water till we can fix it.
One leak we've got right here across Raggedale Creek Bridge on the right side of the road.
Now, that's a big line. That's about as big a thing as we got.
When y'all go in and replace the... Fix those lines, y'all put like a sleeve on them? Is that what y'all do? Cut the section out?
I got the band. A lot of times, we use wraparound clamps. I kind of did bolt down.
All of them are efficient to... There's different ways to fix lines. Whatever the problem they find, they know the best solution once they get into the problem. If it's completely in two, they put a new line in. If it's where they can do a wraparound clamp, they clamp it, and either one works. But...
Most of the time, only PVC pipe. If it breaks, it'll split. It'll split to a whole 20-foot section of pipe. Let it out and replace it.
And Rodney's got another place out here that had a bad design on it. He's getting ready to engineer a new design on it and get some contours on it. It's been breaking. How many breaks you had out there? 42?
We probably got several thousand dollars worth of clamps on it. It's out of the intersection, 42 and 51.
This has been known to break on a regular basis. It's just a bad design.
And when the pipe was installed originally instead of 90-inch around, they came down 51 with it and just bent the pipe round.
So under stress all the time.
A bent pipe with 120, 30-pound pressure on it. Don't do that. We fixed it several, several times. And I told the mayor, I said, "Don't dig it up, and we're gonna do it right." We're gonna go in with 45 megalov, you know, two 45-megalov plants to get it current and round like it's supposed to without putting a band on the pipe. I'm gonna have some contractors there. We may help them do that as well as our crew.
It doesn't do us any good to keep going back and back and back and spending more money, so we're gonna fix it right. Anyway, as you said, we need a list of priorities, and we will prioritize.
We're still in the process of getting the certain line relocated down here by Franklin Apartments.
Is that what you're doing now?
Yeah.
How come that was out of the... Is it just cut off for that leak?
They have a leak. They've actually got two leaks on their side.
But it's not on C17?
No.
Okay. I knew they're not having school tomorrow.
I talked with the guy this morning. They've got plumber coming in tomorrow to fix it. And that's probably why they're gonna be off.
I was just asking.
Yeah. I talked to him this morning. He asked me this morning if they could turn it on long enough. They knew we were trying to conserve water. He asked me if they could turn it on long enough to keep the toilets and stuff going. He turned it right back off, and I told him that'd be fine today. And they're gonna be down tomorrow to get it fixed.
Before we move on, there's, there's something on Bud Hatch, is there a leak or a caving in, Mike, you remember, we talked about it?
There's a cover that's, that's.
It's not a water leak though, is it?
No, no, it's got an eighteen, it's got an eighteen inch line running through that. Rodney, you made a one of them, a little bit more, in an eighteen inch.
Yeah, that same eighteen inch water line goes over that cover.
Over that cover, so then you start uncovering to replace the cover, then you gotta deal with eighteen inch water line, and if you uncover, too much of it, I guess.
I had a couple of roads got the road like caving in, there was cones there, so I didn't know if it was a water leak.
No, that's what it is, the cover's rusted out, so they're.
Are we gonna fix it, or somebody gonna?
They're, they're getting a contractor to give them a price on, what they're wanting to do is maybe, uh.
Put a sleeve in that cover.
Put a sleeve in the cover, or, or more under the, more under the road and put about two smaller covers in.
And do it one day. They're not have to uncover the.
Not have to uncover the eighteen inch water line.
Somebody was over there asking about this, I was, I was trying to give an update.
Well, thanks Rodney.
Before I go, I'd like to say a special thanks to, uh, Eddie Turner, who you made, because he has helped me a lot about posting stuff. And Scott Johnson as well, John Raker, he, he's helping post some stuff, and try to keep everybody updated on what's been going on. Also, I know forty-nine counties have been putting it on too.
Absolutely.
Appreciate all that.
Everybody's been trying to help us out, we thank them all of them. I think most every city and, and town in Marion County's been somewhat affected, their water systems been affected by this storm, and, uh, we know that, um, I talked with the mayor of Huckleburg individually, and, and we shared, uh, woes about water, and they've had their share, and Riggitt's had their share, and Brad Creek, and on and on it goes. Gune had some minor problems, Winfield had some problems, so it hit us, hit us all in a bad way, but, our, ours multiplied in that we had in town our residents out of water, and then we were depriving, uh, our lines were depriving others out in the rural areas from having water, so it kinda multiplied our, our problems, uh, even magnified them to us more than some of the other areas, I guess. I wanna give a shout out too to our fire department, they run a hundred and eight calls during the ice storm, uh, including forty-two, uh, people transports, uh, people that couldn't get where they needed to go, and they worked three wrecks and, twelve power alarms, and they, eleven, uh, times they went out and cut tree limbs and, uh, trees out of the road, and, uh, medical calls, sixteen, public service, like, delivering, uh, medicine or food, thirteen of those, and, various other, um, things, a hundred and eight calls, that's a lot of running in a short period of time. That, that's a great job for our fire department, we appreciate all those guys too, for that hard work and being faithful for their job in their community. Okay, uh, we might have some things we'll come back to, at this point, let's get started on our agenda. Um, item one would be a recommendation to approve the minutes from the February first, uh, twenty twenty-one meeting.
I might get a motion approved.
Scott made the motion.
I'll second.
And Ross made a second, all those in favor of approving our minutes, okay, thank you. Uh, item two, we were gonna, uh, have Andrea here tonight, she called in, uh, contacted Angela, couldn't be here tonight, so, with your permission, I'd like to table that item to where we can, I, we really need to discuss this thoroughly with her, I think, before we proceed on the, um, Hamilton Salads renovation project, so I'd like a motion to table that item, please.
I'll move.
You got a motion, you need a second, Scott here a second, all those in favor of table item two, that'll be our presentation from Andrea, and we'll try to get her, uh, back in with us real soon to finish up on that. We'd like to announce the, uh, uh, part-time worker, uh, Tatum Land will be rolled over to a full-time position with the Hamilton Sanitation Department. Uh, Tatum's been working, uh, some, some summer work, and then he's been working some with our street department, part-time, good worker, and we want to, um, offer him a full-time job with sanitation, uh, moving him over from one department to the other. And I'd like to recommend that his, uh, uh, starting pay would be fifteen forty per hour for this position. And we'd need a motion to pay Tatum.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Uh, Ross made the motion, we need a second, and Matt made the second, all those in favor, thank you.
Mayor, will, uh, Mike, do you know if Kevin's looking at hiring another part-timer, is everything good in y'all's two departments? Is everything gonna be evened out, or should I be expecting a?
I don't know about Kevin's department.
Okay, but you're.
Actually, I'm losing, I've got one that's retiring at the end of the month, and he's been.
Taken, taken his place, okay.
Yeah, we, we'll be losing a full-time him, but he'll be taking up that slack. Uh, we'll, we'll hear from Kevin if he, if he needs some more help in a part-time, uh, the summertime, when they get into their paving, a lot of times they do need additional help. We might make it on out towards, uh, late spring or the summer, but he'll probably be back to us asking for some part-time help for the paving season. Um, item five, uh, a recommendation to allow our city clerk, Angela Owen, to open up a new checking account for the sole purpose of depositing monthly diesel fuel tax payment for the Love's truck stop. Starting in December, uh, twenty twenty-one, we will repay Love's diesel fuel tax collected for this year. After the initial payment in December of twenty twenty-one, we'll start paying Love's quarterly for diesel taxes collected from that. Uh, until we meet the two billion threshold, uh, that was established in ordinance, uh, twenty nineteen dash one, authorizing an economic development agreement with Love's, and we'd need a motion to open that account.
I'm, I'm.
Matt says, Matt, and Scott second that motion, we need to vote on that at this town, all those in favor of opening that special account.
I'll send this back.
Pardon?
Two cents, two cents.
Um, when they, uh, recover that much capital, then we'll get all the taxes from Love's up the entire operation, and, uh, I think we'll see, uh, some significant dollars there. Item six is a recommendation to approve the purchase of two Chevy Silverado pickups, trucks from Fox Chevy, at the state bid price of thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy cents each for the City of Hamilton Police Department. Total cost of this purchase will be seventy-three thousand eighty-five dollars and forty cents, and we'd need a motion to, uh, purchase those items.
I'll make that motion.
Scott Robinson made the motion, Scott here a second, all those in favor of purchasing two pickups for the police, thank you. Um, a recommendation to proceed with the bidding, bidding out and widening and paving of the service road located in front of the New Love's Truck Stop, Tetsco, Huddle House, and Key West Hotel. Um, we, uh, really, really need to do that project, and, uh, I'd, I'd like to see that done, I'd, I'd like to ask for a motion now to proceed with that project.
I'll make that motion.
Ross, and Matt's second, we got Ross making the motion, and Matt's second, all those in favor of proceeding with that project, thank you very much. Um, verdict's not in on the lighting yet, is it? Uh, we're still working on the lighting, have you heard anything from?
Yes, I was supposed to make that Friday.
Basically Friday, okay.
This Friday, uh, Matt.
We, we found out, once we got that built, we had some dark spots down there, and, and I had, I had a gentleman call me about the lighting from the bridge down to thirty-five and then down thirty-five, how, how dark it is, and, uh, we really need to look at, I think we need to look at that thoroughfare and see if we not only need to have some lighting near the Love's truck stop, but actually back up thirty-five and then, then back up forty-three toward Hamilton. Uh, there's just some really dark a- areas down there, that I think, if we're gonna use that as one of our main entrances to town, I think our lighting's very poor, uh, and I believe the power company will put them in, and we'll just pay the, the, the electric bill.
Equipment and installation.
Yeah, I think they'll put the lights in for us if we'll just pay the electric bill.
And once you get to the bridge, or ask for that, it gets dark.
Yeah, so I think we need to. Uh, as we drive down that way, uh, let's observe, uh, our pure lighting down there, and let's rediscover that at a workshop right away and, and talk about how much lighting we think we need down that way, or if we need lighting, if you say we don't need lighting, and you determine that we don't need lighting, then we'll forget about it, but while we're into improving this road, I think we might need to look at that, so let's just think about it.
Do you think thirty-five will widen out and there down to the Ford Interstate? There is talk about that, isn't there, making another, another lane, two lanes?
There's talks about it.
Is the county?
That's a state, is that city?
That's a state. County.
Scott knows a lot about this, he's worked on it.
The county applied under the gas tax, the Alabama Rebuild Act, they applied to basically widen to state specs, and, uh, even though we thought we had a good project, it did not go through. Uh, we have discussed at various times, uh, applying for a bill grant, which we applied for, maybe three years ago now, uh, which, uh, is a federal grant, uh, that would have allowed us to foreland the entirety of thirty-five from the interstate to forty-three. And that was like a six million dollar, a little over six million dollar application with the city throwing a million, uh, on it. Uh, we did not get it, that's a long-term process that if we do, we need to really invest and try and go to push that. But, um, the county tried to get the two, the two lane, that didn't work, uh, they will continue on, Mayor and I have discussed this quite a bit. Ideally, that needs to be a three-lane or a four-lane, you know, Aldo's position on it is, let's see development, then build the road, uh, our position is, let's build the road, see the development, you know, um, so.
It'd be something more traffic or something.
Right, and, and the numbers are gonna increase, obviously, with, uh, the development out there now, but, uh, it's one of those where the city may end up having to bite the bullet to, uh, invest quite a bit, uh, in it to, to foreland the road, uh, city and county.
I mean, is something more, just like when you say three-lane or, or not four-lane, but rough line road, put a turn lane in the center, or something like that?
That was one of the original thoughts about doing three-lanes, with the turn lane all the way down.
Right.
That may not be as beneficial as, as of an actual lane of traffic. Uh, the infrastructure along that highway is an issue, it's costly. I know we have our water line that runs right down it that would have to be replaced, the Northwest Southern Gas District has its main transmission line that runs down, it would have to be moved completely, and that's five to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost, uh, and again, it's their entrance, it's on, and so there's a lot of, I hate to say little things involved with it, it's not just a matter of putting on pavement, but, but it's something that it's time for us to seriously put on a, a plan to, to widen it.
Well, I was thinking, if we're thinking about lighting it, we need to make sure we're not gonna widen it first and the pavement, or maybe do them at the same time or something, that, exactly right in there, it's dark and set all the way down through there.
And that, that was part of the, uh, grant application when we did the bill grant, was basically interstate alley lights all the way down, I mean, we, we were gonna light that, light it up like a official street, but, um.
And our, our previous administration voted to, to supplement, if we got that large grant, they voted to supplement the balance, whatever was due, we were gonna pay it from the city.
Yeah, so the city made it, and our application wouldn't necessarily be something that would've just jumped off the page or something, except for the investment the city was willing to do, because that was twenty percent cost, and, uh, a lot of municipalities can't, can't do that, and are not doing that. And it's an odd, it's a rare grant, like Alabama made it too, uh, so we have to fight, you know, a lot of competing interest on it, um, that, uh, but that's our best bet as far as widening, uh, to a four-lane.
Shelby needs to have those four to get to that.
And, and they were, they were helpful, it's getting big, but we had a couple of larger areas that were, uh, in, in a, in a desperate kind of sense, so that hurts.
Figure out if Scott got money, he got all the jobs.
You're doing.
Uh, Tim, if you'll come to the table, we wanna talk about your hours now, uh, we didn't manage to get this on the agenda, but it's a pressing item. Uh, if you all look, but Tim has wrote us a, a copy of, of the plan for, uh, adding, what are we adding now? Is it a ladies?
Ladies, uh, bathrooms.
Plus, you got a side mechanical room on the bathroom, that, this is all in the design, overall, twenty-one by twenty-seven or so, the, uh, overall dimensions. Uh, you went out and got a swap, three bids?
Three.
Three bids, um, all these are reputable contractors, correct?
Yeah, I was uncomfortable with any of them.
Okay, and, um.
The situation we're, we're in over there, anytime we have a, a large event of any kind, uh, the, the restroom facilities are totally inadequate. Uh, we, when that complex was built, at that time, for what it was built for, which is just like lead gangs and stuff, it, it was okay with the, the, the supply lines that are going to the existing bathroom are half inch, and, and it just, it does not fill, you know, fill enough fast enough for the demand. And so there's really nothing we could do with that, so we're giving a three standing one and putting commercial, uh, equipment in it, so that we can handle the demand when we have, when we have an event. Tim, how many tournaments we got planned over there? I have seven right now. Girls, all girls? Yeah.
What, what's the estimated time it'll take to build this building, we get, this, if we could get the contract let, or?
It didn't go, didn't go pretty quick, they said just a couple of weeks, this is block building.
So get, you'd have it in time for this coming season, is that right?
Not, not the first couple of tournaments, which are in the first, the hospital has a couple in the first of March.
But you'll get some relief.
Yeah.
From this.
By the middle of March, end of March, when we really start our, uh, our tournaments, we should have it.
Yeah. Is this the most pressing need we've got at the ball fields?
Yes.
Okay, how's your lighting at the fields by and large, are you in pretty good shape on your lighting?
At the complex, we are, at the, the Lily Lake fields is, is pretty bad shape, at both fields it's inactive, Lily's nice guy.
Yes, you don't mind, uh, Tim, in the next short while, kinda taking advantage of that and bring it to one of our workshops, we will.
I'd love to, I'd love to talk to y'all there.
Uh, get us a little report on that and, and be ready to present it very quickly, okay? We appreciate it. Well, gentlemen, I, I, I hope you've had a chance to look at this, and, and you can see the bids, and, and, uh, the lowest bidder, uh, with them all, all having been, uh, screened by Tim, and he, he knows their work, and, and, uh, some of us have used these people at our own homes, I know I. and some of us have used these people around homes. I know I've, I've had two of these contractors work for me and they do excellent work. I have had the privilege of having the other contractor in my house, but on various occasions, I've seen their work and I trust their work and I think they're good at what they do. I'd really like to recommend, since we're under a timing issue, that we go ahead and bring this up for a vote tonight. Could we have a motion? Can, can we do that, Scott? Do we need to make a motion to add this to the agenda?
Ideally, that'd be the way to do it.
At this point, I'd like to have a motion put on the table to add this matter to the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Ross made the motion. We need a second to that.
I'll second that.
Scott Robinson. All, all those in favor of adding this to our agenda on a last minute notice? Okay. Then I'd like to also recommend that we take the lowest bid for the bathroom complex and award the, the bid to the lowest bidder and that being Casey's Custom Homes, Hamilton. I believe Chris Casey's, I don't remember that company. If we all can agree with that, I'd need a motion. Matt made the motion to do that. We'd need a second.
I'll second.
Scott Tyra second. All those in favor of awarding that bid to Casey's Custom Homes? Okay. All right. We appreciate that. Is there any further business tonight that we need to take care? We've been all over the place and I'm sorry we're rambling so much, but we did want to give a few thank yous to these people that worked so hard during the storm and I know all of you have been concerned and I've been on the edge about the water situation and I really don't think it's really anyone's fault. I think we just had an unusual storm and eleven million are out of power and water in Texas. We've, we've got probably about six hundred still out of water in Hamilton in that line. About twenty-five hundred, four thousand were affected by low pressure or no water initially. We got it down to about six hundred families. So we're making improvements and I think by tomorrow evening, we'll see large improvements and maybe almost everyone restored to the system.
I just want to say one thing. I think that going forward, I think we need to put something in place. We're all apartment heads. We need to have an emergency plan in place. That's just my take on it. That way, if you have an emergency plan in place, you can act on it instead of not having anything in place. I know this is a rare occurrence in as far as the, the magnitude of the event, because I guess what eighty-five was last time we had a pretty good ice storm. The snow seemed, never seems to be an issue, but you know, we're getting into the spring tornado season and I just think...
We'll be entering the tornado season right away.
Right away. And so I just, I just think we need to have some kind of, you know, at least your department has presented some kind of backup plan, emergency plan in place.
For the most part, we don't have any TV or radio at Hamilton anymore. It's grown weak at least with the cable not working with our stations. What's Pete doing right now for TV?
Oh, he's still going. He's on Facebook too. We know that. So he's, he still has plenty of viewers. We just don't have cable viewers. A lot of them has gotten antennas. But, you know, still hard to get the word out. And Scott and I, we've all talked about, we need a Facebook page that, social media that we don't really utilize much and, and that's the quickest way of getting things out.
Wayne and I were just talking about this.
So if you share something and somebody else shares it and you can reach hundreds of people quickly, and sometimes it's good news, sometimes it's not good news. But, you know, it's gonna be a two-edged sword. You're gonna get some feedback that's great. You might get feedback that's pretty negative, but you know, whatever it is, it is. But it still gets the word out pretty quick. That's just the world we're in now.
Wayne, Wayne, will you tell us what your, what your plan is for is proposing something?
If y'all, whenever y'all give me the green light, I mean, we can have something running within just a few days on social media side. The, the website is a whole nother can of worms, but it, it can be done. It'll just be a lot longer process. But the social media can even up and running in a day or so.
Well, I think that'll help us with our storm plans too. And obviously, we got our newspaper...
It's about the easiest way to disseminate information.
Our newspaper is good to report news, but it's, they're not minute by minute, you know, like a, a social page can be. So while Scott does a great job on his write-ups, we need something that's constant and quickly disperses people and, and our chamber does some work for us as far as communicating, but we need, we need something that moves faster than slow news, especially in crisis times.
Well, you know, I guess I was just thinking more, I got very told of that, I guess more on the lines of, you know, each department needs to have a plan in place about, you know, if this event happens, you know, how many people we're gonna have on the call or who's gonna, you know, how we're gonna go about things. Being proactive, I guess is what I'm saying.
We, sometimes you have to have a reactive type remedy. Proactive is good. There's times when reaction is the only answer. That's unfortunate, but the plan itself is not a bad idea at all.
Mr. Mayor, can we, can we not go ahead and give him the green light now and add him to the agenda and vote on that as far as Wayne's?
He gave us a fair offer. If we don't take him up, we won't find another offer like he made us, not for sure.
We do need to get that. Yeah. We talked about it long enough.
Yeah.
I make a motion. We add it to the agenda and start it. I mean, we needed this next, I mean, last week would have been good to have something we could have put out just to word what was going on and what we're trying to do.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second on the floor and add this to tonight's agenda. And we need a motion and a second now to give the work to Wayne to, to go forward.
I'll make that motion.
Ross made the motion. Matt made the second. We're gonna hire you, brother. All in favor? Hundred percent want you to work for us.
Sounds like a plan.
All right. We won't bias you on your reporting. We, we want you to do this separately from what you report. You give us a fair shake on that.
Scott's the new reporter. I'm, I just record things. If you want, if you want news recorded, that's him.
You put it out to the paper before he does, because you live stream.
I film it. That's it. That's all I care about.
Anything else tonight? Yes?
I'd just like to thank the ladies downstairs.
Very much.
Tina and Kim, wow.
They called.
That phone has run continuously. I mean, you hang it up, you pick it up. You hang it up, you pick it up. Sheila, Verdina, you know, Jeannie, when she's been here, Amy. It, it's, it's been not so pleasant, but it's, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I, I can't, not like they have. Most time I'm sitting there just going.
We, we do think of all of our ladies downstairs that have filled all these calls, some of them are pretty rough calls because people are very impatient, being out of, out of service and on the water. A lot of the public, once you've talked to them, so many of them have been understanding about it and that it wasn't something we created. It's something that just happened. And broken water mains, the ground literally shifts enough to snap those pipes. It's hard to believe that the ground moves, but in these freezing conditions, the ground literally moves and it'll break those pipes just like you broke a matchstick. And when it does, your water rushes out. We, we were gaining ground Saturday. We had a cast iron four-inch bust and let all the water back out of the baguette tank. We had, had got water in that thing and then it backed out of it and it took them, it was, it was broke right in the bale where it connects and that's the hardest break to fix on cast iron. And they worked two-thirds of the day getting that one leak repaired. It's that hard to repair. So these guys are, are worn to a frazzle, but I think today they kind of want to battle and I believe we'll see much improvement by tomorrow. Keep in touch with me. If we, if we got a worse crisis, then I think we need to talk because we gotta fix this problem and quickly. Thank y'all for being here. If there's no other business, we'd have, have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second from Scott. All those in favor? Thank you.